Good evening and welcome to the July 23rd School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. Dr. Leclerc.
Good evening, everyone. If we could please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind us.
I got it, thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a few announcements tonight. I would just like to let everyone know that the next regular school committee meetings are August 27th, that was a change in date, and September 10th. And the first day of school for students is Tuesday, September 3rd. Mark your calendars. And I do want to just make a little announcement because, I'm trying to find my paper right now, we haven't had a school committee meeting in a few weeks. And I want to recognize, we had a group of students at the high school that won the S-Schools Match Wits competition. And I know that just about everyone knows about it, but I do want to recognize them formally on our broadcast tonight. So the team, just so you know, they were the seventh seed team and they beat the first seed team.
Amazing.
Which was amazing. And I do want to just say the names of the students so that we can recognize them. The team that competed was Hannah Wozinski, Aiden Chapuis, Quincy Crabbe, and Drew Ratcliffe. Other team members include Joseph Wong, Alice Wanamaker, Ace Okaton, Shane Cudworth, and Kristen Hartley. And the school advisor, the faculty advisor, is Rose Guerrero. So I want to recognize that they did an amazing job. And I know that many people have already congratulated them on Facebook, but I think it was worth mentioning here this evening. So, thank you.
Excellent, congratulations.
That's the first time they've ever won, right?
Yes, yes.
I think so. It is great. Do you know when that's going to air?
It already aired.
It already aired.
It already aired. I think like right at the end of school.
Okay.
Like maybe the weekend after school was out or something. It was right, yeah.
All right. Sometimes you get a heads up and you can watch it because it's taped way in advance.
Yeah, yeah, it is taped way in advance.
Correspondence, is that it for your announcements? Okay, correspondence?
No correspondence or gifts tonight.
Or gifts. And there is no one here for public speak. So we will go on to subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee?
We have not had a meeting.
Okay. And Policy Review?
We have not had a meeting.
Okay. Oh, we are flying. All right, how about a collaborative update?
We did have a meeting. I'll try to keep it short, though. So our presentation was from Albert Musad of their Professional Services Division. He talked mostly about their Title III Consortium, which brings together districts that wouldn't other qualify for Title III funds because you need to have over 100 English learners in a district for that. I think they have 14 districts in the Pioneer Valley that take part in that, seven in the Berkshires, and a couple of private schools because it's open to them as well. So they do grant management, budget management, and then help with actual events and stuff. So that was interesting to learn a little bit about. We did vote on the 2020 budget, although, of course, there will be changes as the year goes on. For the financial report for this past year, for the first time in a long time, they're projecting a surplus of about $100,000, which really speaks to the hard work that they've done. We were given a presentation by the Collaborative's Treasurer, Don Scott, who we met for the first time. He just kind of told us a little bit about what he does, which is pretty minimal because they do a great job with their finances anyways. He said the worst thing that he ever found was a batch of checks that weren't sent out that were sent out without having been signed, but the bank cashed them anyways, so it didn't even end up being issued. So, let's see, they presented a customer survey results. So half the respondents were teachers, of whom 65% were in public schools. So it was very weighted the way that they got their responses, and you can kind of see it in what folks had to say. For example, the most well-known benefit was discounts on PD as far as what the collaborative offers. Two-thirds of respondents had expressed interest in entirely online PD, so they have six online courses this coming fall for teachers. There's also been substantial requests they've received for PD for school nurses and librarians, which they're going to be pursuing. And overall, they see an uptake and understanding of what they do, but it's such a hard story to kind of tell about the whole organization. So they always ask for us to provide our support in spreading the good word. They're working on redesigning their website to improve accessibility there. We formally started to formally establish a Policy Subcommittee, since so many of our individual school committees do that, and we've started having those conversations a little bit. The Executive Director plans to present to superintendents in October about an opportunity to collectively purchase translation services, which I know I've brought up in the past, which obviously will reduce the significant cost that a lot of districts face. So that's something to look forward to. And just so you all know, you do have the option to opt in to receive the Executive Director's mostly bi-monthly report. If anybody is interested in ever getting that, let me know. I can hook you up. I understand if you get enough emails already. So our next meeting is the Executive Committee only, which you'll recall I got roped into. So that's on August 21st from 4:00 to 5:00. And then the following regular meeting will be on September 25th, at which point I'll probably actually update you. The Executive Committee meeting is only for voting on hires and separations, which is something that the Board has to do, so.
I mean, I can tell you as a public school teacher, I think the collaborative has done a phenomenal job of really reaching out to schools. We get the calendar, we get updates on all sorts of programs, PDs, tuition programs, certification programs every single week. So if teachers aren't reading it, they have to delete or at least click on it and ignore it, you know? But there's a lot of information there.
Absolutely. And I will say the Executive Director, Bill Deal, a couple things, something that's come up in the past couple of evaluations he's had is his sort of communication style. So I know he's really taken it upon himself to be better about being available for superintendents and just spreading that information. I think the reports are kind of a new thing the past couple of years, if I understand correctly. So, that's all.
Okay, so I'm going to kind of take over for a minute, and then we'll go to your education policy update. So I've been watching in horror the news concerning migrant children in detention centers. And I realize that the reason why nothing much has been done is because people see this as a political issue. But while we fight each other, innocent children are suffering. These children deserve the protection of all adults in our country, no matter how anyone feels about immigration. I believe that the only way we are going to fix this is committee by committee, town by town, city by city, spreading our message to all of our government officials, from the governor to our president. I wrote this resolution asking for all children at detention centers to receive the kind of care we would want for all our children. I presented this to the City Council at their last meeting, and I asked them to approve it in August, and then to share it with other cities, towns, and government officials. As a school committee, we are in the business of children. And if we don't speak out, who will? I hope we will approve this tonight and begin spreading this message ourselves. Time is of the essence. The longer this goes on, the more scars these children will have. It is a question of our humanity. So I'd like to read it now. Whereas minor children should never be used as pawns in order to make a statement to adults. And whereas minor children are vulnerable and unable to protect themselves. And whereas infants and toddlers need to be nurtured by responsible and caring adults. And whereas all children need clean food and water. And whereas all children need a safe and comfortable place to sleep. And whereas children who are mistreated physically, mentally, or emotionally carry those scars into adulthood. And whereas all children and teens have the basic human right to be protected and safeguarded from harm. And whereas children deserve our care and protection, no matter where they come from or how they got here. And therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton School Committee is calling for the United States Government to immediately stop and correct the abusive treatment of migrant children in detention centers. Any discussion?
I would, does your mustache remain?
I would just, I mean certainly have no objection to such resolution, and I like that the language is so clear and to the point. I really appreciate that. I don't know, I don't want to water down the resolution or maybe just make note on the record. As I read this, and I also, what also came to my mind was the state of foster care in our state, in our country. And it kind of touched my heart to read all of this and think about what's happening to our foster care system within our own state as well. So I'm not looking to, I just want to make note of that, but I liked that it was so clear and to the point.
Okay. I was just going to thank you for bringing this forth. I think many people, and certainly myself included, have been feeling horrified and helpless, and so this, I think, is a small but meaningful gesture. So, thank you.
I'll just, once again, reconfirm that as well. I completely agree with Marissa. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and it feels very far away from where we are right now, so it's something that we can do without disrupting the rest of our lives and taking time off for work or trying to drive down south or something. Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
I do intend, and my hope is that if we do vote for this and approve this tonight, that we are going to send this to other school committees and other cities and towns.
Yeah, you could probably talk to MASC and see if they could share that news across the state.
So I move we accept this resolution as a committee?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have more on an education policy update?
That's it for tonight.
That's it, okay. And Wellness Committee?
They've not met.
Right. I didn't think they had. Health and Safety?
We have not met.
I didn't think so. And does anybody have anything under other?
I would just like to share, it's been a while since we've had a school building committee meeting. I know one's coming up, but just because it's so pertinent to the project. So just around, looking at land for the roundabout and having all the land become under the complete control of the city, even though the roundabout is an add alt, we have come to an agreement, basically with Williston, to swap land, Brewster Ave, with the portion, I think it's 24,000 square feet, on the top of Park, and that is progressing. We'll bring that forward to the Board of Public Works on August 14th, just to get on their record what easements and who is going to take over what. Those negotiations are almost over. We would hope to close on the exchange in late August. I've talked to our OPM, and that is plenty of time to demonstrate to MSBA that we have complete control and access over the land for the school project that is approved, as well as all of the add alts, depending on how they're prioritized and how the budgeting goes. I just wanted to get that update.
Excellent. Thank you. Superintendent update?
Okay, well, I gave you the S-Schools Match Wits update. I will just, in the place of that, though, I will just let you know that last week, Mrs. Avril, the principal of Maple School, and I attended the CPA meeting, and we had a community member who's also a staff member make a request for funds from the CPA for an ADA compliant play structure to be located at Maple, so that all students, particularly in our integrated preschool, will have access to equipment on the playground. And the way this grant was written, the structure may, will be able to be moved if need be. So if that building, once it's turned back to the city, is going to be used for affordable housing or a community center, anything like that, and they want the structure to stay there, it can easily stay there. But if it's going to be used for something else, and we don't know the answer to that yet, it can be moved to either another location within the city, or it can be moved to the new building. There will be a place for it there. So I'm happy to report that the CPA did approve our request last week unanimously. So we're really thrilled because we have several students there that are not able to access the playground, and it's a detriment to them both physically and socially. So we're really happy to address that need.
How about it?
Yep. And, so I forgot to tell you that in the beginning, so I want to tell you that now. And so I just want to introduce Ruth Ever, who's here tonight from the Healthy Youth Coalition, to give us an update. And welcome, Ruth. Ruth is going to be talking to us a little bit tonight about, I think, what's been going on the past year. You probably recall that we did lose funding, so she's been working with a very limited kind of leftover funds. And I know that they did apply for the grant again just recently, and so they're awaiting word on if that will be a go or not. Ruth, welcome this evening, and thank you very much for taking the time to come and talk to us tonight.
Yeah, and I apologize that it took me all year to get here. And I actually had several other executive committee members who have been wanting to come, and then here we are in summer, so it's kind of a hard time. Lois Lemon is actually, was going to come back. We thought we were going to be a little later, so she may just make the end of it. But let me see if I can get this to work.
Sure.
Just have like eight slides. But yeah, I mean mostly it's just to give you an update. You know, maybe not even everybody heard that we did lose our funding last year. It's, we're on a five-year cycle with the Drug Free Communities Grant, which is a competitive federal grant. And not unusually, unfortunately, they often will not, they'll cut you off at five years, see how much support you really have in your community and how functioning you really are as a coalition, and then you can come back. And we, you know, we got a report that gave us the feedback on where we were weak and where we had scored outstanding. There were several that we scored very high on, but there was enough that we didn't, that, you know, you have to get at least like a 95, I've heard, to even be considered kind of for the next round. You know, you've got to have every T-cross and every I-dotted, and, you know, the grant was maybe 120 pages or something in the end, when you put all your attachments and everything. So we're waiting to hear, the fiscal year, strangely enough, they had to change to November 1st instead of the usual federal fiscal year of October 1st. We already don't have any money, so it doesn't really affect us, but you can imagine if you had a grant and then you have this month gap that you're supposed to try to cover, it's a little stressful. And we were here, I think, a year ago, maybe, giving an update. So I will tell you now, I don't have new data. It's like imminently coming, and I wish that I had it yet. We, I think we'll be one of the first communities to get it. This is our Prevention Needs Assessment Survey data that's done every two years for eighth, 10th, and 12th graders, I'm sure you're all very familiar with. But we are looking forward to getting that data over the summer and having our data team look at it, along with the school, of course, and being able to present that and kind of weed through it. And what we're most excited and curious about is the trends, is what's going on with marijuana, what's going on with vaping, you know, there was some, what's going on with mental health issues. There were a lot of disturbing numbers that we were looking at two years ago, and a lot, you know, the sort of context of children's lives around drug use is changing so rapidly now, more than it used to, I think, years ago. So that every two years, it's like we're in a whole, I mean, the opioid crisis is just, every two years, it's like a whole new phenomenon that's happening. And where are we at now? And what drug is now? And was, where was fentanyl two years ago? And, you know, all of that. So we're all very excited to see this new round of data and see what it's going to happen with it. So just to remind people, there's not a lot of slides on this, but just, you know, for those that may be newer, our basic mission is to champion healthy decisions and substance use prevention among youth, although ultimately, the federal government would like us to see us addressing the whole community. I don't think they give us enough money to really do that. We can't even do the elementary school because we just don't have the staff capacity. But, you know, ultimately, it is about coalition work in a community context. So we're not doing one-on-one. So when you affect children, you affect a family, you affect a community. So ultimately, yes, we do want to affect the whole community, and we want to work together to foster strong and healthy youth and families in a supportive community. And those are the Drug Free Community Goals, which still makes sense for us, increase community collaboration, and decrease youth substance use. So that's the context. I've pretty much already given you this update since we sort of started with that, that our grant ended September 30th. I'm a very frugal director, so we've been squirreling away money every year and sort of being very smart with our money, which, thank goodness, because it's served us well for this carryover year, we had enough, at least for me to stay on, at the minimum amount that we could do for me to maintain my health benefits and paying into my state pension, which will be 10 years come the end of this year that I've been in the state system. We lost Karine Briggs, who was, which was, to me, and I think for our coalition, was a huge loss. She was a wonderful asset, but understandably, she, you know, she couldn't, we just couldn't guarantee anything, and so she smartly got snatched up somewhere else. And we will hear, probably not till October, which is sort of frustrating, but there's not much we can do about it, and presumably for a November 1st start date, if it happens. I want to also mention some other little grants that we've gotten along the way, which has complicated our lives in some ways, as well as it's been kind of wonderful. Here's Lois from our coalition, who wanted to come and be supportive. Last year, we applied for a Project Hear Grant, which may have been announced here, I would imagine, last year. That was specifically, that grant and that whole project was through the Attorney General's Office, just to remind people, and it was for doing middle school-based, evidence-based curriculum. I advocated for expanding that a little bit, and they heard that feedback, maybe other people did too, but I know I did, because we were already doing the Strengthening Families 10 to 14 program, which is an evidence-based middle school program, but it's not taught in the classroom. And so they did allow that, and so I think, I believe we were the only other, only funded group in the state that was not just doing a in-school curriculum. So I kind of see us as a little bit of a model or a pilot, and so we wanted to go well. It has been going well. We had three successful sessions last year, went really well. There was a beautiful article in the Gazette that came out in maybe May that you might have seen. I'm happy to send it around if people didn't see it, that in the health section, that was sort of a personal story about two of the families that had gone through the program and how it impacted them. And I thought it illustrated beautifully the value of this program and why we keep pushing for it, even though it's a lot of time and resource, and it's not an easy program to do, and it's resource-intensive, I need facilitators, we have to do outreach. You know, it's a lot easier to say, here's the curriculum in the classroom, here, health teachers do it, we're done, you know? But the impact of this program continues to be far-reaching. I continue to hear from families, oh, yeah, I still, I mean, years later, oh, I still use this stuff, I still use this, I still use that, the information has stuck with me, it's made a huge difference in my family. Had somebody today say that to me. You know, like, it changed how I parented my kids. So that's powerful. The challenge is that we no longer have a grant to actually fund the program. This grant was written as an extra. This was to do like facilitator training, so I could train some new facilitators and sort of supplemental things, because I was counting on the Drug Free Communities Grant. So we're in a really challenging position right now, and we've got to figure out some other funds to get us through November, at least, you know? I mean, hopefully not beyond that, but because we, you know, I've got it, otherwise, we literally don't have money to do the program. We don't have money for anything anymore except to pay salary and benefits, because we didn't realize we'd have to be paying the benefits as well for a staff position. So that's it. That's all the funds. But at least I'm here, you know, three days a week, which is, otherwise, we'd have nothing. So that's, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. So I'm still part-time, we did lose our other staffer. Julianne is still the project director. In the grant that we wrote, we are actually on paper right now moving our coalition into the city. It'll be in the Health Department. But that's not going to, my understanding is that won't actually happen till November 1st. The way my contract's witnessed, like after November 1st. I don't know what that'll mean if we don't get the grants. I guess we'll sort of cross that bridge when we get to it. But the hope is that that will make us look more competitive to the federal government. I think it's a good move overall, because we do represent and sort of support and are here for the entire city, not just the students who are in the public school in East Hampton, because as we know, there are other folks in the community who don't necessarily send their kids to public school. Our Executive Committee has been meeting, the coalition itself has not been as active. It's a lot of work and resource to, you know, to have big events and big meetings, and so we're trying to be really strategic about our limited resources now and think about, well, who can we partner with, and how can we kind of support other things already happening in the community, which makes more sense for us being now in a more kind of limited way, which is very frustrating, because we had so much going on, there was so much momentum, and, you know, it's disappointing for everybody. The Executive Committee has been great, we've been even more active this year. I have two students who have been a huge asset, really helped us open up being more active in the high school and more present in the high school. They're really gung-ho. I'm just so excited about them and having them continue next year, I'm hoping. And we paid them a little stipend, so I don't know how I'm going to do that either, but we're going to try to figure that out. So just a quick review of some of the things we did manage to do, even with our, you know, kind of limited resources. I already mentioned the Strengthening Families, and we made a wonderful video with one of the families that we were playing as kind of an advertisement outreach that was on Facebook and East Hampton Media was putting on their site, and it was great working with them to do that, Tim being one of the people who helped us. We did manage to do compliance checks. We helped support regional trainings for the alcohol beverage servers in the region, which were sort of part of collaborative group. I mean, part of the work of our coalition and my job is to represent East Hampton in the wider public health community, and so I've been able to kind of keep that presence. And this is one example where we say, well, we're part of this regional training, which, you know, we get a lot more bang for our buck. We wouldn't do it on our own, because we don't have that many people in town who need the training, but we're able to collaborate with others. I already mentioned having the students on the Executive Committee, and we did keep our newsletter going. We have over 400 people who get that, and doing things on social media, updating people on events that are happening, anything, resources that we can share, parenting information, you know, things that are happening at City Council that might be of interest to people. Have stayed, not only myself, other executive members have also been active in the, SPIFI is our regional drug prevention sort of public health coalition for the county, among the steering committee, and we have members on the School Health Task Force and the Policy Work Group, that's continued. And newer this year, more recently, has been being involved in the Trauma-Informed Hampshire County Group, which is doing amazing work, and I've been very active in that. And I'd be happy to come back another time and actually talk to you about it. I think you probably all be very interested if you're not aware of this group. We're creating, right now I'm on a group that's creating a 90-minute presentation for sort of wider group, people like the Chamber of Commerce, or the Rotary Club, or any group that deals with the public, that would be, it would be helpful for them to understand what does it mean to be a trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive, trauma-responsive agency, even if you're not a mental health agency per se, or, you know, a school committee per se, I mean, people who are already kind of aware of it. And so we're trying to just spread that language in our county, and East Hampton has a very active role that it, you know, can play in that. And I know that there's interest here. I know that the school committee is already interested in that, the district. The middle school, we had some fun activities happen with the kids there. They did the photo booth again, the kids did a window display with some positive messaging. We always have positive themes and messages. We did help with the PNAS and got that out. We had a wonderful graduate student who just sort of fell out of the sky this spring that just saved me, who had just graduated from Boston University, had grown up around here, has family in East Hampton who own businesses, and so she pretty much ran the, what's listed next there, the prom pledge campaign that we did. We did a wall of pledges that students sign, saying that they would be safe and responsible. We do the Parents Who Host Lose the Most campaign, that we put the lawn signs all over town. You might have noticed those, some of you might have hosted them. And we do the sticker campaign, where we put that message on the pizza boxes at several of the stores in town. They've been wonderful to work with, Antonio's and Village Pizza. Every year, they've been letting us do that. We go in, they have piles of pizza boxes, and we just put the stickers on them, hundreds of them, and then they, you know, they go out the week, this is usually the weekend before prom and the weekend before graduations, something like that. And then we submitted our grant on July 8th, and we're waiting to hear. I've pretty much mentioned the challenges and we're waiting to hear. I pretty much mentioned the challenges already, you know, the funding issue, the partner, how we're gonna sort of make this work with the other small grants we have. Oh, and we have a $750 grant to do a town hall meeting, which we are going to use to have these house parties, which is this wonderful idea that we came up with this year, that we've started, and we're, this is a way we can try to keep it going a little bit and support it, which is, instead of having meetings that people don't come out to, it's hard to get people out to things, we're starting to look at, well, what's the, what's the friendship and neighbor network that people already have, love seeing those people, never have enough time to get together, right? Who has enough time to see their friends? And, you know, their kids, the parents of their kids' friends and things like that. So, we're, we've started this model, and we've had several meetings in people's homes. I have an executive committee member who is a retired social worker, and is doing a lot of stuff around drug prevention, harm reduction work. He and a parent on our executive committee have, have paired up and are hosting these, making them happen. And it's not about, here's the information. It's about, what are your concerns? Let's talk about what you're, you know, interested in, what you're concerned about, what you're scared about. A lot of parents are confused and scared about what's happening with things like vaping. You know, the, as I said earlier, the information is changing so rapidly. So, we think that this could be a really nice model, that we might even be able to pair up with a graduate student who might want to do some research on those kind of relationships. And so, we've decided that that will be our, you know, quote-unquote, "town hall" meetings. We'll have small ones, you know, all over, and do it over the course of several months. So, that's what we're, our next step that, step that we're working on. And that, you know, sort of figuring out what are our priorities going to be, given the kind of limitations we have. So, that's my quick update. It wasn't as quick as maybe it should have been, but does anybody have questions, or anything I can answer about that? Lois, do you want to add anything?
Sure. My name's Lois Levin. I am an East Hampton resident. I've been in East Hampton for 30-plus years. My kids grew up in East Hampton schools, graduated East Hampton schools. None of this discussion was happening when they went to East Hampton schools. So, right now, I, I got involved in this because it wasn't there. And when I was listening to Ruth talk, I realized how many of the things we're starting to take for granted is happening in East Hampton for our kids, that just wasn't available before we had this grant. So, and I just need to backtrack. I work in healthcare, and I'm a clinical dietitian, but I work, I cover a mental health unit. So, it's not unusual for me to see the effects for some of what happens to 18-year-olds and young adults, because these programs like Strengthening Family is not there. Even though I meet the young adults in a clinical setting, you just listen, you read through their, their histories, their life histories, and how they end up in mental health unit, or how they end up on a medical unit, for, for effects of alcohol, for effects of drugs, or even for the effects of overdoing nicotine or caffeine. It's, it's amazing the difference between the people I meet that have had some background education and the people who haven't. And I'm just amazed when I listen to what we've done over the past five years, because I've been involved in it, so you don't tend to see it, and you don't sit back and look at what you've done. But I feel now that because the Healthy Youth Coalition has been around, and even before that, the East Hampton Protection Task Force, when they were around, we, those things aren't taken for granted anymore in East Hampton, and I think it's really critical to continue having these programs there, because it's not going to get any easier. And that's the best buffer that we can have. And because I don't work in this community, I work in Franklin County, I remember five years ago, 10 years ago, the impression of what East Hampton was like then compared to how people are looking at East Hampton now, and that's a huge difference. It's just, we, we have much more respect than we did 10 years ago for what we do in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Ruth and Lois. I appreciate it.
Making it, making it still work on a gap year.
Yeah. I'm glad we can do anything.
And I'm hoping your funding comes through.
Yes, we all do. We all have some money.
Yes, we all have our fingers crossed, Ruth. And so, the next thing I want to direct you all to is the approval of the NEARIE School by the school committee. For those of you that, you should have a sheet that gave you a description of the NEARIE School. And I will just let you know that the NEARIE School is an established private day school that has been located in Holyoke for several years. And I guess that they outgrew their location in Holyoke, and they are moving for the new school year to East Hampton. They're going to be located in the former Tri-County school location. So, they need to have the school board of the city in which they're going to be housing their school approve them as a private school. So, just a few things for the listening audience. The New England Adolescent Research Institute is what NEARIE stands for. They are a not-for-profit, Chapter 766-approved day school that serves students whose primary disability is emotional disturbance. Their students' diagnoses include psychotic disorders, mood disorders, ADHD, trauma, autism spectrum disorders, and reactive attachment disorders, and a variety of atypical neurological conditions. They currently have 16 to 18 students in the 7 to 13 elementary school program, the age 7 to 13 elementary school program. They have a middle and high school program that services approximately 28 to 30 students. And they have a transition program for approximately six to nine students between the ages of 18 to 22, who need extra time with life skills, and before they transition into independent living. So, their numbers are not enormous, and there's further information in here. I didn't know if you wanted me to read it all. I think all of you can take a look at it. But they are looking for approval, which is required by the Department of Education.
I'm aware of this school. We've had students actually come back from NEARIE, back to our school, which is really kind of an amazing thing to have happen. I've been there for meetings as we were transitioning the student. It is really, they do a really phenomenal job with these kids. They really do. So, I'm certainly.
I think it's fair to say they serve a, a population of students that, that definitely may need something
Absolutely.
beyond a regular public school day setting.
Can I ask just to point out clarification? So, are, are they considered in terms of effects to our funding? Would they be considered like a charter school if one of our students wanted to go there, or needed to go there, or was directed to go there, like?
It's, we pay tuition for any of our students to go there. It's a tuition school. They're a private school. So, it would be, it would be primarily a student with a disability that we could not service in our public school.
It's an out-of-district.
It's an out-of-district placement.
Placement, okay. Do you know if we have any students currently enrolled?
We do.
That would be nice for them to get to stay in their home city, then.
Yes.
It's a great school.
And they invite any of you to go to their school. They've been very easy to work with, coming into the city. They've, I think they've reached out to the mayor. They've reached out to, to our office. They've come in, their, their executive director has come in to see us. So, they've, they've wanted to do everything right.
I think the strength of the, of the program, I, I completely agree with, with the chair and superintendent. I think a, a nice bonus to this is that one of their leadership team members, Steve Dion, is very familiar with the property and used to work for Tri-County, and he knows our city very well. And I think while the program stands on its own merits as strong, having Mr. Dion, you know, kind of lead the way at this project is, is super helpful for the transition. And I love to hear that East Hampton children who will need these services are closer to home. I think that's another added benefit.
Can I just clarify? So, this is simply an approval for the relocation?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, there's no suggestion that we have any further jurisdiction or responsibility?
Nope.
Okay.
Now, is this a permanent relocation, or is it temporary?
Yes.
Oh, it is.
They're permanently moving into that location. It's larger than the location they exited.
Oh, okay. Any more? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, all right. The warrants, payroll, and the minutes.
Okay, very good. I move to approve the school payroll dated June 20, 2019, in the amount of $1,118,852.09.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 20, 2019, in the amount of $334,061.49.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the school payroll dated July 3, 2019, in the amount of $428,955.53.
Second.
And I'm, sorry.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated July 3, 2019, in the amount of $477,496.08.
Second.
All those in favor?
Finally, I move to approve the school payroll dated July 18, 2019, in the amount of $337,767.38.
Second.
All those in favor?
And I move to approve the minutes from our regular session meeting on June 11.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. That's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Executive session minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, the right here.
All right, excellent. I missed those.
Thank you.
All right, so I would make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 11, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you want a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very short meeting. It's because it's summer.
Summer.
Good night.
Thank you.